Okay, if not, our public hearing is now open. Ms. Loughlin, anyone sign?
Dennis Willingham. And again, just for everyone here, please clearly state your name and address before you speak. Thank you.
Dennis E. Willingham, 792 Old Glenmont Road, Front Row. And I still believe that teachers need their raise, but I think our administrator or school superintendent need to be reassessed to get their salaries more in line with reality because it is a proven fact they can't handle their responsibilities. Rested Jeffries renovation was brought up from the last public hearing. We raised taxes two or three years ago for Rested Jeffries renovations. Why wasn't it paid? Because they even had a, the playground was put out on bids for just donations and it's been paid for. But you've taken money from us and haven't paid for the renovations and still trying to get it? What are you doing with this money? There's too much other table dealings going on and need to be stopped somehow. I don't think a May tax approval or raise should retro back to January 1. I mean, you're just, how deep do you think our pockets are? Of course, I'm sure each and every one of you have probably had your pockets altered to larger sizes to hold the more money as you're gonna get. The new fire station with no budget, that doesn't make any sense. I don't know where you all coming from. Raise teacher salary with tax increase and take it away with a tax increase. In other words, you're gonna put it in their right hand from your tax increase, but then you're gonna take it out of their left hand with your tax increase because they're gonna have to pay more taxes if we get more salary. I don't understand where you're coming from. You're just trying to rob us blind is what it amounts to. I don't see any other way of putting it. I mean, that's, and just like Mr. Carter said last year at the budget meeting, he said, "You think this year is well, wait till next year." So you all have known this for over a year. So why hasn't there been proper channels taken to correct it? You all just keep, keep on digging and digging and digging. How much do you think we are able to handle? I'm not on, I'm not a poor little rich boy. I mean, I've had to work for everything I've gotten. You're taking it away from me. I don't know which way to go. Thank you.
If you would please hold the applause down. Is a public hearing, this goes against the policy? Well, we can't change that tonight, sir.
Unfortunately, the policy is in place for my benefit. It's really difficult because of the change in volume to do my minutes. But Donell Spurling is the next person.
Donell Spurling, 30, Iris Lane, Front Row, Virginia. Mr. Chairman, Board, thank you for allowing me to address you all this evening. I'm here as a taxpayer, a parent of two daughters ages eight and 12 who attend Warren County Public Schools, and as the proud administrator of Leslie Fox Kaiser Elementary School. I've heard all of the public comments from the last board meeting. I've read all the news articles, have had many, many conversations with colleagues and neighbors, and I felt compelled to add what I hope is some clarity to the decision about which you will soon be voting. As a taxpayer, I too have been very disappointed, angry, and confused about our county's dollars that have been mismanaged and lost. I've heard the statements of folks saying, "I didn't know," and it's not up to me to determine if that is true or not. In regards to the budget vote that is before you tonight, there is no saying, "I didn't know," about what will continue to happen to our public schools unless decisive action is taken to make Warren County Public Schools' teacher pay competitive. Teachers are among the best individuals I know, many of whom are here tonight. I see people with brilliant minds, big hearts, and commitment to giving their best for our community's kids. Teaching is indeed a calling, but there is a pervasive view that has been expressed by many in our community that because teachers care about kids, they should give 200 percent to their job just because it's the right and noble thing to do and not worry about how much they get paid. I argue that logic is entirely skewed and quite frankly dangerous, especially when we know what our teacher attrition rates are like already. My teachers at LFK and those with whom I've taught in Warren County Public Schools certainly are in this field because we love shaping minds and the lives of our community's children, but they also deserve a fair and competitive wage and a reason to stay in Warren County. As administrator, I hate seeing our seasoned teachers leaving our county at an alarming rate. I hate seeing our young teachers lose their mentors. I hate being forced to assign a new teacher a mentor that only has two years of experience and really still requires a mentor themselves. I hate seeing our new hires come in with fire and passion, grow, and learn about implementing high-quality instruction and research-based interventions through the high-quality professional development that we offer, simply to have them accept positions one or two later in a neighboring community where they can earn a more competitive wage. I hate seeing the 58 percent of my teachers rush out of the door at LFK to race to a second job and the 21 percent of them to a third job they have had to take on to supplement their income and provide for their families, knowing that they will come home from that job, that second job, and return exhausted to the intense work of planning and providing high-quality instruction and care for our children. I hate seeing our students have back-to-back consecutive years of being in classes taught by brand-new teachers. Don't get me wrong, we have some amazing novice teachers, and I wouldn't trade a single one, but we know that data shows our students achieve at higher levels when they benefit from a teacher with 10 or more years of experience. Please, help me keep them. As teachers, we plan for lessons using all of our available data about our students' achievement. We know that hope is not a strategy. When we see that what we have been doing has not made the intended or desired impact on our students, we consider, "Why hasn't this been working?" The same tenet is true in the business world. You put a plan in place, customers go to competitors, and the business hemorrhages resources, both human and fiscal. In both fields, it's essential to understand that hope alone is not a strategy. We can't just hope that things will change. If we know that the current plan is not working based on that wealth of data points, we need to take action. And I reiterate that many have said they didn't know about the events leading up to the current disaster. In contrast, I want to respectfully point out that we do have all of the facts about the immediate need for a fully funded school budget. You've heard from many people about our teacher attrition rates due to lack of competitive pay and about the negative impact on our students. Please use the facts presented by so many to make the decision to fully fund our school's budget. There's no going back later on, saying you didn't know what the impact would be. Tonight, I implore this Board of Supervisors, please don't rely on hope that our teachers will stick it out and stay in Warren County despite the knowledge that teacher pay is not competitive. Please do not vote to simply rearrange existing funding that is already insufficient to do the job. Please do not allow the EDA mess to distract you from the facts. This vote will have a long-lasting impact on our beautiful community. Look to your children, your grandchildren, our future. Look at the data that has pinpointed a clear and present danger to our school system and to our community and vote for a fully funded budget for Warren County Public Schools. Thank you.
Kim? Did I pronounce that wrong?
You did.
I'm sorry. Is it Oakland?
It's a funny spelling. I'm Norwegian, I'm married.
I'm sorry.
My name is Kim Oakland. I speak to you tonight as the Warren County Education Association President and a teacher at Rested Jeffries. My address is 18 Virginia Pines Lane. I struggled with how to begin this plea. You've heard my concern about the underfunding of our school systems many times. After hearing some of the comments at the last public hearing, it's clear there's a lot of misunderstanding about how Virginia actually funds its schools. Part of why we are having this discussion is because the Commonwealth does such a poor job of funding its schools. I did want to address one thing. For those who think teachers are getting a 5 percent raise from the state, that is not accurate. The General Assembly voted last year to provide the state share of a 5 percent raise for those employees that are considered crucial, according to the standards of quality, in the biennial budget, but would only begin in the third quarter of the second year of the budget. That means that the state share of the 5 percent would only kick in after January 1st of 2020. I believe I'm correct in that statement. And when the politicians can say they passed a 5 percent raise, that means that they agreed to fund the state share of positions required by the state, which is far less than even half of what the school board has to agree to fund. By the way, for those of you who say, "Don't do the 3 percent," that would mean we would not get any of those state funds because, of course, we have to provide matching funds. But I don't want to spend my three minutes talking about something that has been explained at every school board and Board of Supervisor budget work session. Let's talk instead about some times in history of Warren County Public Schools where leaders listened to some of the loudest voices in the crowd rather than putting students first. New High School, late 1990s. This was a project that was put off time and time again. A new high school was approved, but rather than continuing with the already-approved building program, a school board and Board of Supervisors that ran on a no-tax increase stopped the building program and returned grant money to the state. To my knowledge, that's the only county in the state of Virginia to do something so short-sighted. While this delay resulted in the beautiful buildings we have today, for which I'm very grateful, it was also a decision that cost the county millions of dollars, if not billions. Recession and budget cuts. During the recession, Warren County School Board made drastic cuts to cost-center budgets. That's the schools and departments, for people who don't understand accounting. Those cuts have never been restored. Don't feel bad, the Commonwealth of Virginia has not restored education funding to its pre-recession rates either. In addition, teacher salaries were frozen for a number of years, and even when there were raises, the scale was reorganized in such a way that no steps were given, which is why the consultants found our salary scales to be so illogical, because they were just made to conform to the employees that we already have. A few years ago, you all were presented with a six-year plan that would have eventually resulted in a competitive salary scale and the restoration of some of the cost-center budgets that have yet to return to pre-recession figures, but you didn't want to raise taxes more than a penny, maybe two. That short-sightedness and unwillingness to put our students first brings us to where we are today, still lacking a competitive wage in most classifications, still needing money for our schools, and still losing teachers at an alarming rate. It's rather ironic that this is happening so, so close to the recent Easter holiday because, quite frankly, I feel like you all are sitting in the seat that Pontius Pilate sat in. Are you gonna listen to the voices calling for barabbas and crucify the school system? Or are you gonna be brave enough to take a stand and put our students and staff first? I'm a preacher's kid, I can say that. Are you courageous enough to fund our future?
Good evening. Paul Gabbard, 1221 Valley View Drive. I guess the first thing is, I would like to see hands of you all on who has read this budget, understands it, and do you see anything wrong with it? Nobody? Do you see something wrong with it?
I see we need to make as much adjustments as possible. I've read it, I've gone to the budget sessions, I've listened to the needs of the community.
What's one that you would do? What's one thing that you see that needs to be adjusted?
I have no objection.
Of course, of course.
This is not supposed to be a question and answer session.
I thought I could ask questions.
You can, but we're not supposed to answer, Mike.
Wow. Okay. Fair enough. Mr. Stanley, tonight on your screen, you said 3 percent or a little over 3 percent on the cost of living. In the paper today, you said 2.5 percent, which is, oh, never mind. You can't talk. You can't talk. Mr. Stanley, Mr. Witten, paralegal, purchasing officer, administrative assistant in the financing department, payroll personnel tech, on and on and on. It's a 2.5 percent cost of living increase. You have put everybody in for a 4.7, 2.7 increase. I would really like to hear that explanation. That's disgusting. Plus, that has increased FICA. Everybody's insurance has gone up. I'm not getting a pay raise. What's going on? What's going on? I think all of you up there look down on us as peons, like we're nothing but peons. Just tax people, tax them to death, tax them to death. I don't care. I think all of you should give up your, your, uh... Any benefits. Keep your salary, give up your benefits to add a little bit more money to the budget. If you got rid of those two, you'd save a whole lot of money. Mr. Carter? Well, that's, God, I'm gonna ask another question. Buy a warehouse that can't be rented, that was bought for too much money, it can't be, it can't be leased for enough to pay the payments. How about if you and everybody else would win out on that deal if you take over the loan? Take it away from us. That's about, that was a, I was about one of the stupidest, I, stu-, I mean, I was just plain stupid. That's the only word I can come up with. Let's see. Of the 4.27 increase for Mr. Stanley and Mr. Witten and everybody else, this, this is disgusting. Firefighters are getting a 3.97 percent decrease. Decrease! And I know that for a fact because I know a few of them, and they have told me that they're getting a decrease. And you can sit there, well, I was gonna say, "Look at the public, but you're sitting there writing." Look at me. Is that right? Is that right? It isn't? Why is it? Why is it? You're the one who did this. You're the one who did the final budget. Every department put in what they wanted. When it was your time to look at it, you raised everything. You raised everything, except for the guys who put their life on the line, fighting fires and going out and rescuing people in like car accidents and everything. You took away money from them.
We have not cut the salaries of any position. We cut some positions because we were applying for...
No, 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 no. I know this for a fact, like I said. I know some guys on the thing, their salaries have been cut. Mr. Witten smiles.
I'm not familiar with that.
That's worth a smile. Anyway, if this budget passes with this kind of pay increases for all of these departments, there is something wrong. Something wrong. The EDA's going on, taxes are being raised, anything that can be taken out of this budget should be taken out of, in a whole lot. I'm just going over payroll. There is a whole lot in here. My wife is a retired CFO. She laughed at this budget. She laughed at it. And another thing about the, uh, the warehouse purchase, I think that should be investigated, just like the EDA, just like McDonald's. Starting with you. Starting with you. And let's see, what else do I want to say? The rezoning of, uh, this is, this doesn't have to do with the budget. The rezoning of the land out at the shopping mall from commercial to residential, that's a non-brainer.
That's not part of what we're doing today. Today is...
Do I still have three minutes?
I wasn't timing you, I was letting you go.
Do I have, do I have more time?
I wasn't timing you, so you can continue.
Okay, thank you. You spoke.
It's amazing.
No, what's amazing is this, and you know it.
And the behavior of some of the people, and I shouldn't be saying that, but I will.
Behavior of some people.
No, not just up here.
4.27 percent.
Not just up here.
I'm telling, I'm not politically correct. I call it like it is, and I'm sure these people like it. The last thing I'm gonna say is, if the rezoning goes through out there, there's only one reason why, and this is it. Thank you.
I apologize if I mispronounced your last name. Gloria Sullen, Sullen? I'm so sorry.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board?
Name of the...
I speak quiet, so I think I need to speak up. Thank you.
My name is Gloria Seline. I live at 362 Dogwood Farm in Farm Row. And it's pretty obvious, and I believe that everyone here is aware that we are addressing difficult times with the budget and supporting the future needs of the growing community. I acknowledge that serious mistakes were made by some, and we cannot always change the behaviors of what others have done and have happened, but we can certainly change the future with many. It takes a whole community for this change. Changes in our future can benefit from growing awareness, greater oversight, preparedness for continued growth of this community, financial stability, business, job growth, quality education, and this can happen with joint partnership from everybody. We as a community can benefit with positive speaking solutions versus negative ones, an atmosphere that resonates positive, community strength versus pessimistic tones. I personally would like to see and be in a community that is well-known for its integrity, higher learning, and one of the best top places to live in Virginia. Increasing incomes for county employees creates a fable and stable environment to retain dedicated teachers, social workers, firefighters, and police officers. These people provide valuable support to our community. As you're aware, losing teachers in an alarming rate due to market value and wages has a high impact on our community. It is difficult to hear that our educators are leaving for higher-paying jobs in other cities to support their families and their lives. We need to set an example for our children. They need to know that our community has respect for educators, that they are there to be mentors and provide a valuable support to them to be successful in their futures. It is also important for teachers to be respected as our educators. They are, they are to be the mentors and provide valuable support to them to become successful in their futures. It is also important for teachers to value our children, knowing that leaving generates an imbalance in our children's learning and can impact their experience in negative ways. Therefore, how do we encourage educators sustain our community? How can school leadership help our educators stay current with teaching methods and make community stand out as one of the leading counties for higher education? There are things we can do to retain valuable educators. When teachers leave a school mid-year, it disrupts the continuity of a child's learning experience. Turnover also severs a relationship that has formed between teachers and their students as well as parents and guardians. As a result, the child's academic support system is weakened, a problem that'd be more detrimental for students. It creates a vulnerability with children falling between the cracks. How can teacher, how can a teacher identify a child's learning needs when there are multiple substitutes and changing of teachers running classrooms and they cannot focus on the individual learning needs? This trickles down and it creates a perfect storm, a storm for children to be put into a strained social service environment due to having learned to trust adults that are providing part of their learning and life experiences. If the school loses its accreditation before you graduate, then it could not be recognized by most institutions or agencies or even college admissions. Accreditation is not just student test scores, it is the performance of the school board and the teachers as well. How do we reach a healthy accreditation level in factoring of accreditation if we cannot retain the teachers? Leaving for higher pay and jeopardizing student performance and learning. Some of the solutions may be making teachers more affordable, make teaching more affordable by providing housing support and childcare support. Provide forgiving loans, service scholarships, and stipends that help attract teachers to high-need schools. Make salaries more equitable across districts so high-need schools have a fair shot at recruiting effective teachers. Provide extra compensation to teachers in mentoring and leadership roles to retain expert veteran teachers. We need to lead to exceed. Teaching to lead with integrity helps children to succeed in the respect that supports their endeavors. Learning does not start only at home, it is supported by our community through proper learning and examples. Student-teacher ratio matters. It is by taking thoughtful action, increasing teacher pay, improving hiring and mentoring practices, and strengthening teacher principal relationships that we ensure that teaching is a desirable occupation for aspiring teachers and a sustainable one for current and veteran teachers. Our community, over the last 10 years, just to name a few things, it has taken great strides in commercial growth, maintaining transportation, and improving school buildings, parks, and recreational facilities and programs. We need to attract large and small business that can help reduce the impact of taxes on our residents and contribute to the success of the aforementioned 10-year growth. We need to ensure law enforcement, fire, and rescue authorities remain financially sustainable and that they deliver their statutory services to a sufficient standard. It is challenging, let alone have to manage public service and safety if there's a budget cut which can impact the community and measures that can be prodigious. We need to reduce the overload for social services by supporting our children as a community. This being said, I would like to thank our current board and all that you're doing to consider and support the needs of our residents and community. Yet I am hopeful and positive that our community can rally together to create a model community going forward that encourages higher education, people wanting to live here, and businesses that will see benefits of our community and contribute. community. This being said, I would like to thank our current board and all that you're doing to consider and support the needs of our residents and community. Yet I am hopeful and positive that our community can rally together to create a model community going forward that encourages higher education, people wanting to live here, and businesses that will see benefits of our community and contribute to our growth. I would like to also state that I respectfully ask this board to approve the proposed budget and real estate tax in order to support a sound foundation of sound public safety and service, higher and competitive education for our children's futures, and a strong economic growth and prosperity for our future. Additionally, and most importantly, to help give us the foundation to create a community of integrity, higher learning, and a great example of how a community overcomes adversity. In conclusion, maybe a good model for our town and community, quarter maybe should be a community that leads to succeed. Maybe that is a prime example of how to influence our children and our future citizens. Thank you.
All right, I've gone and looked at the policies and procedures, and it reads that if any time during these proceedings, any member of the public has a question, it may be written and presented to the deputy board clerk. Then when the applicants have completed the final presentation, the chair will read the questions and request a response from the appropriate party. The board will accept comments in writing until the close of the public hearing. So I hope that helps to clarify. Ms. Mount, please.
And I have a pad of paper. It's not much, but if anyone needs it. Fred Andrea?
Good evening, my name is Fred Andrea, I live at 367 Overall Road in Bentonville. A month ago, I spoke in favor of increasing the tax to raise teachers' salaries. My position has not changed. A number of folks have suggested that any tax hike to support teachers should be postponed until after the whole EDA mess has been resolved. The problem is that that scenario, the problem with that scenario is that we have no idea when the mess will be resolved. The EDA case is a complicated one involving lots of different people and complex intertwined issues. I'd be surprised if it's fully resolved by a year from now. And you, as supervisors, have to make a decision tonight. Based on your vote, our experienced teachers will make their decisions on whether they can afford to stay in Warren County, teaching our children and grandchildren. Like you, the teachers have to make their decisions now. I think most would like to stay if they can afford to, but if salaries are not increased, many will leave as many did last year. We had over seventy experienced educators leave Warren County schools last year. If the EDA case takes over a year to settle and salaries are not increased, we could have not only another seventy teachers leave this spring, but another seventy next year. The loss would amount to over two hundred and ten experienced educators gone in three years. We cannot allow this to happen. Good schools are important, not only because we want the best for our children and grandchildren, but for our community as well. We want our students to be, grow to be productive adults, and we'd love to have them stay here if we can. Our schools are also an important consideration when businesses choose a place to locate. Good schools will attract new businesses to come to Warren County, resulting in more jobs for us and our children. Having more businesses will reduce the pressure to raise residential real estate taxes. So whether one has students enrolled in our schools or not, excellent schools are good for the whole community. I urge you to vote for the tax increase to keep our community strong and vibrant. Thank you.
Gretchen Devens?
Good evening, Gretchen Devens, 424 Mountain View Drive. Mr. Sayore, I live in your district, and I appreciate your representation so far. I want to share a story, a true story, maybe adds a little lighter note to the evening. One of the major expenses that a lot of families have is putting on a wedding, and they have to figure out how they're going to budget their money. Well, I went to a wedding recently for the son of some family friends, so we didn't know the bride's family, but when we went to the reception, it was pretty clear that the bride's father and the bride's mother were not on the same page with what they expected for the reception. The bride's dad, I'm going to call him Daddy Money, Daddy Money had an idea of this wonderful, wonderful reception, and while some of us might have had a DJ, or we might have had limited open bar or cash bar, Daddy Money had open bar for five hours. Daddy Money booked a Motown live band. Now, the bride's mother, I'm going to call her Mama Go Along to Get Along. Mama Go Along to Get Along, she had her hopes and dreams for her daughter's wedding, but when she had to deal with what was left of the money after Daddy Money had his way, we had what I could describe as light hors d'oeuvres, and that's being generous. We were hungry. So to use an example of how I'm feeling about this county right now, and I've been here for seven years, Daddy Money, he booked the band, he bought the booze, but he missed the meal, and we were hungry. And I just want us to think going forward, are we going to continue to book the band and buy the booze and miss the meal? Is the meal the teachers, is the meal the schools, is the meal the elderly? There's a lot of nice things that have been put up, I'm a relative newcomer, but I don't feel like I want to be mommy-go-along-to-get-along. And I just, going forward, I just challenge you to really look at our priorities, because right now it feels like some of the board members are acting like Daddy Money, and not too many of us feel like mama-go-along-to-get-along. And we all want, we all have this dream of what this county should be, just like this couple had for their daughter's wedding day, and it was less than they had expected, I'm sure. Thank you very much.
My name is John Marlowe, I live at 1770 John Marshall Highway, Front Royal, Virginia. As some of you are aware, there was a time that I occupied one of those seats. I spent about fourteen years there, until tonight I didn't realize how much fun I was missing. I was being a little facetious, because...
You want to take my seat?
I know, I know you're not having fun tonight. I also know the public would probably rather be somewhere else than tonight, but they're here tonight because they care about the county. They care about the welfare of our community. And it's important for all of us to listen, because these are some of the best people in our county, because they're here. Other people are somewhere else. You may not agree with what they say, but they are here, and that is important. That seems to me like there are two main points that are under consideration in this budget, and two groups. And one group wants to hold the taxes, keep spending down, and that's a very logical argument, you'll hear some that don't make a lot of sense, but a lot of it is well-founded, especially in light of some of the news that's taking place in our community. There's good reasons to go softly, hold the line. And quite frankly, a lot of the community has lost confidence in the direction of the county, and that's not good. Now, there's another group here who wants to fund the budget. Now, we know that we are losing teachers. History will tell us the last few years, we bring teachers in, they stay for a while, they lose. We cannot afford to do that. We cannot be the training ground for the teachers for Northern Virginia. We need to keep our teachers. So there's a really good logical argument to fund the budget as it's been presented, because only doing that can we do, give the schools what they need. So the question is, and it's a dilemma, what do you do? You've got to make a decision. So what I would do, I look to the future. What's the best thing for Warren County? The best thing for Warren County is education, because without education, you don't have economic development, you don't have the clientele, the personnel that you need to develop this county the way we want it to be developed. We have a lot going for us in this, in this county, but we need to do the right thing. The decision is yours tonight. I will say this, ten years from now, you all will look back and you will remember tonight. If you do the right thing, you'll be pleased with what you did tonight. I urge you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Kristi Atwood, 1255 Pilgrim's Way, Bentonville, Virginia. I came here with a speech, but I've changed it up a little bit. On March 11th, 2019, Warren County purchased a laundromat with an apartment and a separate rental house, to the tune of $450,000. That was twenty-five percent over fair market, or over the assessed value. So who, who, who tells you what fair market value is? Who tells you what to offer? How do you know what to offer? Are we in the laundry business? Is that going to be a side hustle to make the budget? You know, and why is the county, why do they want to be landlords? Why spend money when we don't have any? And not only when you purchase a building, the purchase price is not only what we're paying, we're paying carrying costs. We're paying for mowing, electric, water, upkeep, insurance, and if there's tenants, they may tear the house up every six months, we don't know. I mean, why would you be spending money in that direction? I just don't understand. Last month, I presented that email to you, and I asked, and Mr. Stanley said that he sent an apology out, and that was all. Y'all didn't ask any more questions. Well, I did. I FOIA requested the apology, did not exist, not on email form, and I also reached out to Jennifer McDonald. She said she had never received an apology for that email. So I asked that you investigated a little bit more, because if I would have sent an email like that, and I worked for a corporation or a government, I'd have, I'd been fired. The other thing is, the email that was never addressed was that Stanley knew that Jennifer McDonald was buying from another relative, and that's part of the EDA case. So I really ask you, what are we spending money on this audit for when people have the answers and they're just not coming forward? So are you going to hold your county administrator accountable, since you're the only people that can? Board of Supervisors, you're also the ones responsible for assembling the EDA board, and are ultimately responsible for their actions. Are you going to hold those individuals accountable? While you're not following the steps of the town and demanding to see the audit results, are you complicit and afraid to see it? You hired the county attorney, and he has no clue about conflict of interest, as proven by the opinion that I received from Commonwealth attorney Madden. His opinion on my house was that it was a big conflict of interest, and I had been...
Stay on the public hearing.
I, I am. This is getting to where he is budgeted. He should not be representing both, because is he double-dipping? Are we paying for when he represents the EDA and us? Has anybody ever asked that? The building official, big F on my house, big failure. So if these gentlemen would do their jobs right the first time, we would not be paying out the money that we're paying. We're paying for legal fees because they screw up. We're paying for them to travel to meetings in Richmond because they've screwed up. I mean, please, supervisors, do the job that y'all have been elected to do and supervise. Now, in April, I asked for your resignations, you ignored me. So now within the next week, the citizenry will begin the impeachment process to clean house. Formal papers will be filed, signatures obtained, and you will be removed. Not violently, but by following laws of Virginia, specifically the law titled 24.2, which removes, helps remove the elect officials in Virginia. And back to Rivermont Fire Department, I really don't understand why y'all are giving in elaborate social quarters, because we don't have enough volunteers at Company Three to manage any kind of social quarters. You know, who's going to get the rentals from that? Who's going to do the cleanup? Is it going to be the county? Because there's not enough volunteers out here to help the guys. And as Mr. Gabbard said, I don't know if they took a pay cut, but the insurance premium that went up, they're not getting paid as much now as they did two years ago. There are five that are looking to leave right now, and they're more and more looking. Now, I know teachers are important for education, but I'm telling you, when I dial 911, I want to know someone's coming. I'm the one that had the house fire, I'm the one that lost my grandmother. When I called 911, they were there. That's who we need here, and that's where the budget money should be, not in the office building here in town. And I don't know why Mr. Stanley has to drive a top-of-the-line Suburban. Why can't you give him a Festiva or something little like that? Most of these people that drive a Suburban, you've got to live within your means, and we've been living way above our means. You have to live within your means and do what is right, and not just give to the certain few, just like the compensation study. I don't agree with that either, because they ever offered education, but then all of a sudden, we got somebody that they paid $12,000 for, for a master's degree, and $20,000 to somebody else for education, yet they won't pay for the fireman to go and get education. That is wrong. And when you have high turnover, and you have people looking, and you have people unhappy, it's because you have bad management. And you need to start at the top and cut them, and then that's when we'll have a better county. Thank you.
David Sealek, 165 Hickerson Hollow Road. First, I want to thank John Marlowe for your very wise words, wherever John writes. Thank you. Next issue I want to address, since Mr. Murphy made it an issue, policy of public hearing. The problem with what you said, and said it's amazing and made various comments, is that this board was going to consider a change of policy and limit people to the number of times they could come before you to speak. I referenced Mr. Edgar, y'all got tired of hearing him, and others that were telling you and trying to warn you of problems in this county, and you people were considering changing the rules to say you could only speak three or four times a year on the same subject. That's absurd. Same thing on the budget or anything else. We elected you to lead. Sometimes that's uncomfortable, but you need to do it. If you want to save the taxpayers of this county, and that's everybody, to have more money for schools and everything else, say to the town of Front Royal, "Go away and consolidate," and save everybody in this room thousands of dollars every year. Yet you all don't do that. Mr. Murphy, once upon a time, said that, and he got too many phone calls. At least, that's what you told me.
That's right.
Well, if you're upset by phone calls, no offense, don't be a supervisor, because you said I want to lead, so lead, lead. Teachers and schools. I, I think it's the largest workgroup force in the county, second would be the hospital, I would assume. It's an investment, or at least that's what we hear all the time. So let's treat it like an investment. Expect results. If you don't get improved results, then there has to be a mechanism to figure out how to fix that, so we get results. So I'm not against more funding for schools, but we need better results, and the problem is the management of the schools, as Ms. Brown started in on. I would love to know how the highest-paid CEO in the county had time to mismanage our schools and mismanage the EDA. And I have not heard one of you question that. Where's the rebate to the taxpayer for screwing up two organizations? When Pam left the control of the schools, we had a great school system. Now, it's falling apart. Why? Inattention, absolute inattention. You had the director of the schools or superintendent as the chairman of the EDA, and their... You had the director of the schools or superintendent as the chairman of the EDA, and they're both a mess now. Ask for him to resign and go away and save a huge chunk of money. And as for LFK administrator, wherever, there's a problem there. That school has a problem. When a teacher protects a child and is fired before due process takes place and is run out by administrators, that's a problem, especially an award-winning teacher. And that's what happened at that school. Again, management issues. When you have staff turning over as much as you do, it's not only one problem, because if it were, everyone would leave. It's management. And until you test that, until you challenge that, you're going to continue to have the exact same poor results. There was mention here by, I said Ms. Brown, but I meant to say Ms. Atwood. Excuse me, sorry about that. Accountability needs to start. It needs to start here, and it needs to start here now. We have an absolutely ineffective building department that is costing this county thousands and thousands of dollars in just legal fees. Yet you all keep the building inspector who knowingly allowed a contractor, oh, I forgot, the contractor didn't have a contractor's license, to obtain building permits. Where's the accountability for that? We should not have non-contractors obtaining building permits in violation of Virginia law, yet we did, and no one has been held accountable. That's Mr. Stanley and Mr. Bean's fault. But ultimately, it's your all's fault, because you're aware of it, and you've continued to allow that person to be employed. Why? School leadership, I've sort of addressed, school accountability. If you have a problem in the school and they say money's going to fix it, okay, let's have measurement standards to say how. If you want more money, let's see improvement in these areas. It's a mutual relationship. County golf club, another huge absolute waste of money. I was on a visit, and it's not a sexy subject, but the county has mismanaged or failed to properly fund one agency that's vital in this community, and it's the one no one wants to talk about, DSS. We have a huge problem at DSS. It's worse than the school problem, but I don't see anybody, is anybody here from DSS? Raise your hand. This agency has the biggest problem in this county. It's not the schools. They are cleaning up messes every day, and we have probably the highest turnover rate of any regional DSS. I spoke to the lady that is the administrator of DSS to see about trying to find places for people to live, so they stay here, because she has workers that can't afford to live in Warren County, that live in West Virginia or elsewhere. And then if there are one call, we're paying tons of money and overtime, and then there's this wait to get here. If there's an emergency removal, which I was guardian on one, they need to be here. We need to have a place for them. Now, I'm not in favor of what was the EDA workforce housing, but the county can, in partnership with local builders and landlords, create a structure where you have guaranteed leases at a reasonable rate, in nice accommodations for these people, as part of a salary package. But you've got to think outside of the box, and no one here seems capable or willing to do that. The core problem in keeping people here in this community and not having, and this is going to sound very non-egalitarian, but we have too many tenants and everything in this community and not properly vested property owners. And that creates a huge human services problem, which you're not addressing. Starting with the closure of Avtechs, a vast evaporation of wealth occurred in this county. We lived off the backs of property tax holders, residential property tax holders now, since Avtechs closed. I remember the day it closed. I was on my way with my mother down to St. Margaret's School to visit my sister, and we listened to it on the radio. Mary Sue Terry had gone in the federal court to get a closure. That day hurt this county more than anything in my lifetime and probably the lifetime of anybody in this room, and we really haven't recovered from it, because starting that day, you had everyone start to travel to Northern Virginia or elsewhere, and the number of homeowners that lived here dropped. And they have part-time jobs that you can't live on. So when the administrator mentioned that she has teachers that have two or three jobs, they're not the only people that have to do that. There's plenty of people in this room and hundreds of parents of students in schools that have two and three jobs too. And it's because of taxes that they have to keep that second job or whatever, to pay taxes to keep a roof over their heads. The partnership that needs to be created needs to be one with various private sector services to meet the needs of the community. Just throwing more money at government agencies is not going to solve your underlying problem. Now, we live, and I don't know the lady's name, she was the director of the Educational Foundation or Teachers Group or whatever, teacher at Reston Jeffries. She wants to live in the past. We have to live in the present. She wants to go back to 1994, 95. Well, it's 2019, and the problems we face today are bigger and worse. Going back to the past doesn't help. She forecast doom and gloom. We don't want doom and gloom. Because we are, and I think she referenced the resurrection, because we are a resurrection people and believe in hope, we need to look forward positively and to be creative in our solutions. Thank you.